Everybody. Good morning, everybody. We will call to order the Communications and Water Committee Special Meeting and the Special Meeting of the Board of Directors on May 30th, 2023. If we could have our roll call, please.
Yes, good morning. Director Sampson.
Here.
And Chair, Chair Bush. And I just, and I just want to go ahead and state that both Directors, Monty Schmidt, Jed Smith, and Larry Russell are not present.
There's also approval of our minutes from the last meeting.
Yes, we can go ahead and proceed with approval. The meeting will just proceed as a committee meeting.
Okay, great. Okay, thanks. So then, how do we, like, motion to adopt the agenda? Does, I guess, one of us can make that motion and then the other second?
That's correct.
So we need teamwork this morning. All right, I'm, I'm motion to adopt the agenda.
And I'll second.
Just, okay, Director Sampson.
Aye.
And Chair Kush.
Aye. Any public comments on items that are not on the agenda?
There are none.
Okay, moving on then, a motion to approve the minutes from our Communications and Water Efficiency and Special Board Meeting of February 15th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Director Sampson.
Aye.
And Chair Kush.
Aye.
Thank you.
With that, I think we can move on to the main topic for today's meeting, which is an overview of our water efficiency program.
Good morning, Board. Carrie Pollard, Water Efficiency Manager. And let me pull up the presentation here. Are we good? I think so. That's all right. My bad. I thought I hit it. Let's try that again. Share screen. That guy? Yeah. First, first time back in person here for me. You're going to bear with me. All right. Did I do that, Adrian? There we go. Okay. Ready to roll.
Here, I'm gonna try, I know there's a lot to get through. Eighty-one slides. I'm gonna try really hard to not interrupt too much, but I just, just as a framing, you know, I know it's been a while since we had our last meeting in February. So under our water efficiency program, we have, from what I recall, three elements. Our, our water conservation element, which is under the Strategic Water Supply Assessment. And for that, in the past, you've given us actual demand reduction goals. About 4,000 acre feet per year by 2045, with, I believe, an annual goal of reductions in about 200 acre feet a year. Then we also have the Water Efficiency Master Plan, which I think you're going to be focusing on more today, I believe. And then we also have our drought response actions, which we've discussed in the past. So just trying to, for me, it's helpful to keep those three different items, you know, clear.
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a great segue. Even within each of those items, those kind of buckets of water efficiency and potential savings, they're key components. And what we're going to do today is kind of walk through what are those key components? And then take a quick look at the master plan framework and then wrap up with some metrics that we use to track how we're doing in pursuing our goals. So I did build in, like, as you mentioned, there's eighty-plus slides. So I did build in some, some opportunities to get feedbacks. I'm hoping we can get through each section and then, and then discuss them.
So Carrie, maybe then you can let us know when you're ready to
I will.
questions, so we don't interrupt.
Very good. Thank you. So at the April Doc Meeting, April 22nd, I believe, we covered in-depth the water supply or the water conservation element, the pieces of the strategic water supply assessment. And so there was interest from the board to go back and take a deeper dive at this meeting on rainwater and gray water. So we'll be doing that. And then we'll finish, wrap up the incentives piece, looking at the bottom four items, which are not included in the water conservation element, but they are currently offered to our customers to reduce their water use. And so we're going to cover all of the bottom six here today. Starting with rainwater and grainwater incentive programs. So I wanted to include some program objectives. Can, why do we do this? And, and first and foremost, it's really all about education, right? Having a rainwater or graywater system increases our customers' water awareness. It's almost like they have their own small water system onsite, and in turn, they're more aware of how they use water throughout their home, right? And then it also continues to create that ethic of efficiency, which is what we really want. We also want to offset some of the costs, recognizing that these are, can be fairly expensive systems. And we also understand that increasing the water resiliency of our community, whether it's drought or fire response, is, it's also a, a reasoning and, and, you know, an objective in this program. So starting with rainwater harvesting, we wanted to provide an example of the potential for offsetting irrigation demands using rainwater harvesting. So we have an average home, have an average landscape and an average water use. So there's a lot of variables here, and it could be, would be very site-specific. But we did want to just say, looking at a 5,000 gallon cistern, which is fairly large, the potential is to offset demands by 15% for this type of system. Most of our systems, and I have some data, data later on, on what we actually see installed, are much smaller than this 5,000 gallon cistern. But we do want to, you know, recognize that it does offset some of the demand for, when, when these types of rainwater systems are installed. Challenge with rainwater harvesting is that when we need the water for irrigation, it's not when we tend to get rain, right? I mean, this year is somewhat unique. We've had some late rains, kind of in some warm days in between. And so there was, be more potential for years like this. But on average, it's, it's rare that that you'll have enough rainwater to get you through the entire irrigation system. But the shoulder months is really where you'll see the benefit, right? The spring and the fall. Looking at graywater systems, so we wanted to just start with a definition, right? Graywater is bathroom, water that's already been used in bathroom sinks, showers, tubs and washing machines. So no dishwashers, no toilets, right? Anything that, any of the other uses. There is a limit on how long that water can be stored. It's actually included in the code up to 24 hours. There are a range of complexities of systems or types of systems, as simple as laundry only, which would be a laundry to landscape. And then a simple system is about 200 or is 250 gallons per day or less. And then a complex system is anything beyond that. Looking at the potential for graywater, an average household would generate about 8,000 gallons of water during an irrigation season. You can see the breakdown of clothes washers versus showers and sinks included here. With a simple system, the demand offset would be about 25% of outdoor use, again, using that same demand for outdoor use in the, in the rainwater harvesting slide that was, that was prior. When you look at a smaller system, like a laundry to landscape type system, the offset is about 6%. And most of our installations that we see coming through our programs are, are laundry to landscape. So between the two, you know, you're looking at about anywhere between 20 and 35% offset. So while it is beneficial, it's not, it's, it's not necessarily enough to offset all water use within a landscape for most customers, for the average customer, if you would. Looking at our graywater and rainwater incentive program over time, I included this because I think it's a great example of how we continue to evaluate and involve our programs to, you know, ensure additional reach and impact through them. So we've had a rebate for graywater and rainwater, starting back in 2014. And was really one of the first in the state to offer these types of incentives. It was part of our five-by-50 program, and customers had five programs they could participate in and get $50 for each program. So it was a very low, fairly low incentive, but nevertheless, it was, again, you know, trying to provide a, a support for our customers to take these actions. In 2020, we reviewed the program participation and looked at where there were opportunities, looked at what others were doing. And we evolved to the current program offering that, that's included there and that we've talked about in the past. But I think it's important and worth noting is, looking at the rainwater rebate, for our prior program, the average capacity was 90 gallons. So those are very small systems. Under the new program, it's increased to 840 gallons on the average capacity. And so we're seeing that shift in, in level of participation and impact by making these, these adjustments to these programs. And again, and also with graywater, certainly an increase in participation. I think, again, this is just not, an, an example, one example, and we do this where all of our programs constantly evaluating and looking for improvements to, to change with the times, look at new technology and just make sure that, that our, our offerings align with our goals. For our turf rebate program, at the highest tier of $3 a square foot, customers are required to install some type of either rainwater, rain garden or graywater. And you can see there that most of our customers, 57% of the cus, of the participants, have installed rainwater harvesting to get this higher tier. So they can't, they don't get to double dip, right? They don't get the, the rainwater rebate and the $3 per square foot. But they, but, so we want to capture though, that, that we are seeing participation kind of in that program as well, that supports this overall goal. And rain gardens is another, another big one. Graywater, we've had no graywater installations as part of our, our turf rebate program. There are barriers to participating in these types of programs, and we, we fully acknowledge that. It's costly and difficult to retrofit, first and foremost. I think that's probably one of the biggest barriers. There's a number of others listed there, but another big one for us is code compliance, right? So when we look at the, the requirements for participating in our programs, most of the requirements are tied to public health, plumbing code and building code. And we want to make sure that if we're incentivizing installation of these types of systems, that they comply with public health and safety. And, you know, it's, it is a challenge, we, and we know this, but nevertheless, we try and work through and provide resources to our customers to make sure that they understand, you know, what it would take to get these installations in, in a way that, that is meeting these, these codes. Briefly wanted to mention the regional partnerships that continue to evolve or are ongoing. We've, we've heard from and reached out and spoke with Marin RCD. They are applying for a regional grant for a county-wide rainwater harvesting program. And it's the Goldridge RCD up in Sonoma County, they've actually expanded their reach. They, they've reached out to all the other RCDs and said, does anyone else want to do this with us? So their reach is from Mendo, Mendocino County, all the way down to Marin and out to Napa. What they're applying for is workforce development training, so right, getting more installers up and ready to go and, and willing and able and trained to do these installations. They would be providing rebates for areas outside of the water utilities offering. So if someone's outside of Marin Water Service Area, they could get a rebate from the RCD. And then also doing some installation of some demonstration sites. Based on the success of the Goldridge RCD up in Sonoma County, they feel like they're, this is a good opportunity. We'll wait to hear whether or not they actually are awarded. But regardless, I think that being established, this collaboration, it will be, continue to be ongoing. The other one worth noting is the Marin County Stormwater Pollution Prevention Program has budgeted funding to support our rainwater rebates. It's unclear at this time whether or not they want to subsidize our current offering or augment it, meaning increase it. Once it's approved, then staff will work with them to figure out what exactly their goals are and, and what, what changes would need to be made. And of course, that would be brought back to the board for your consideration and, at a future meeting. And so from the, I'll stop there and see if there's anything from graywater or rainwater before I move on to the other programs.
You know, looking at the, the rainwater storage piece, because I think it's an interesting one. I, I guess, looking for your opinion, do you think there's a lot of potential on retrofit construction to add anything meaningful in terms of size, capacity that would make a difference in rainwater storage?
I think there is potential. And especially for new development, right? And when we have, get into our code and regulation section, that's actually one of our, one of the staff proposals is to kind of expand that as an option. So I think maybe we can touch on that in a few.
I definitely think new development's a place, it's more of a low-hanging fruit. But looking at, you know, there's not much new development in Marin, and there's not going to be much in our service area relative to other areas. So I think the meat and potatoes really comes from the, the folks that already are existing. And do those properties, do we see a lot of potential to, to put in a 5,000 gallon cistern? That's pretty tough, and especially with the geography of our county.
Right, and lot size.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's probably why we're seeing the smaller systems that we are, right? But you also, you know, smaller lot size, lower demand, right? Our, our average that I, that I included here would, would, you know, potentially be reduced because of the smaller lot size. So it's so site-specific. I think it's a, a good program that we offer to support customers who are interested in pursuing it, because there is a, a lot of potential.
No, I, I definitely agree. And I think that continue to incentivize is a good thing. Because, you know, your, your comments earlier hit home for us in terms of having an onsite storage, realizing your demand when you're actually watching your barrels drop. And understanding where that water goes is really important. I just think there's an expectation that, that the public should understand to some extent that we can't just build magical cisterns in everyone's yard and make it a, a really meaningful, you know, reduction in water demand. So, but I definitely can support continuing to incentivize the program.
Maybe Carrie, just quick notes, the redemptions or of rebates for both rainwater and graywater installations since 2014, the number are pretty small. I, any, I, I know you'll be talking a lot more about communication and outreach strategies broadly around demand management. Any lessons learned from the previous programs that you think might, might help with communications going forward? Maybe that's something you want to speak to, you know, in the material coming up.
Yeah.
But it's just, it's just interesting that, that, that the overall numbers are so small.
They are. They are increasing, but they are still fairly small.
Right, right, right. I, I, you know, and I think some of the, particularly with graywater, the, the restrictions on that are, you know, I know our house, it borders a creek, so we're not allowed to put that in. We also have a small lot, so offsets setbacks requirements or, or, or constraint for us. And I'm sure, given all the different creeks and things around that, that's a challenge for many. Last question, you know, you noted vector control as an issue with rainwater storage. Have we communicated with our vector control district about this? And have they raised any red concerns?
Um, so great question. I was going to include that in partnerships, but yeah, so we have, through the Sonoma Marin Salmon Water Partnership, they've reached out because it's Sonoma and Marin Vector Control. And so it seems to be more of a regional level would be more effective than us. And so directly just Marin Water-focused correspondence. So as a region, we have reached out and we're working with them to make sure that our incentives align with, you know, any additional material they want someone to be aware of for maintenance and, and such. And so those are, are just kind of launching and, and will continue to be ongoing.
That's good. I, I think, I really hope that we can, can stay in touch with them because they're, they are so concerned about standing water. And this summer is potentially going to be a a tough one for mosquitoes.
And irrigation as well, right? Irrigation efficiency. If you're not having standing water from your, not just your rainwater system, but just your irrigation, right? It's, there's, there's value there too. So lots of different touchpoints for us and mosquito and vector control. All right, so we're going to move on to the other incentives that are offered beyond, that were, that are currently being offered, that are beyond the water supply roadmap. I'm going to, again, so this is our bottom four that are listed here on this slide. We're going to take a slight detour into flume data before we move on to the last three. And so we'll just jump right into that. So the Flume Smart Home Water Monitor Program is a point-of-purchase program. The customer can go onto the Flume website. They have a, a discount code through Marin Water. They can, they pay $75 upfront. After installation, they get 25 back, and the district pays the remaining amount. 50% of the district costs are covered by Prop 1 funding, and we've currently expended about 60% of those, those funds through the installation of over 2,500 devices. Flume does provide minute-by-minute water use, and it allows then for an in-use analysis, which is a detailed breakdown of indoor and outdoor water use and fixture-specific analysis. And so today we have Peter Mayer with us, and Peter is with Water Demand Management. He's a professional engineer and an urban water expert. Peter's work is focused on urban water management, water use research, designing and evaluating water efficiency measures, forecasting future demands, and a number of other items around water efficiency and conservation. He was the lead author in the original residential end-use study back in the late 90s. And he's continued to be an industry expert in evaluating fixture-level analysis. Most recently, he's partnered with Flume Data Labs, and the district has some district-specific data within a dashboard. And Peter's going to walk us through the findings and help us understand what, what we can learn from them and glean from them. So I'll turn it over to you, Peter.
Well, thank you, Carrie. Can you hear me? Great. Well, good morning, everyone. It's a pleasure to be able to speak with you today. So let's go to the next slide. We've got a lot of to cover. So the device itself, this is what the Flume device does, and it straps to the water meter, and it kind of hugs the water meter with some, and holds there. And then it also connects with a device inside the home to the customer's Wi-Fi. Then the, the actually, data is recorded as water flows through the meter every five seconds. So very frequently, that's really the key thing with, with Flume, is it's very high-resolution data. And then that enables the, the system and the connection with the Wi-Fi to provide the customer with real-time customer information. And then the customer can set up leak alerts and notifications. And then also Carrie was provided limited access to be able to, to look at specific data. And then after a period of time, Flume then analyzes a bunch of data, and you'll see, and then presents it back. Let's go to the next slide. So get a lot of questions, oh, how is Flume different from AMI? Because I'm sure you're aware that, that Marin is actually moving towards pursuing a full AMI metering system. So an AMI, that stands for Advanced Metering Infrastructure. That is a full metering system where every customer gets a smart meter, and it's used for billing. That's the primary purpose. The, with the AMI system, meters can be read every, every 15 minutes, maybe every hour. It really depends on the system. And there's generally a daily upload to a portal. And then that system is capable of providing customers with leak detection and useful information. But it's essential that the, any of those customers be part of the system and, and be logged into the portal or have an email address registered in order for them to receive that, that, that alert. So without that, that portal, there, there isn't the ability to communicate directly with the customer. And of course, this is a utility maintained system. Flume is actually quite different. It's a customer product. It's a consumer product that the customer installs. And so it's, it's really, that, that customer, occasionally someone else can install it, but it's typically, typically self-installed. The Flume is battery-powered, records every five seconds. And as soon as the customer has the app and, and has completed the installation, they, then they immediately start getting data. There's immediate leak alerts set. And there are also then associated maintenance issues such as replacing batteries and things. And certainly with Flume, there is attrition over time versus AMI with a utility main, maintained system. So this is the location where we have up to 2,304 flumes, not all at the same time. But over the period of the study, that's the total number that were installed, and this is where they were located. Only at single-family homes. So we're talking only today about single-family homes with the data from Flume. And so this is a very large sample, but it is not a scientifically selected random sample. Okay, so then this also shows what happens, there's this, with all the number of flumes, there's more purchased than actually installed. And then over time, there is, as batteries fail or there's other issues, there is some, some attrition. And that, that is the, the downside of the, of the device. On the other hand, we now have wonderful data from over 2,000 customers that we can report on. So, so let's talk about, a little bit about who were the Flume customers? So, so there was a wide range of home values, but over 90% of the homes in, in the sample were between 500 and 3.5 million. Next slide. Here is the indoor, outdoor, and total per household water use in gallons per household per day from all of the Flume customers, starting in December of 2021 and going through March of 2023. And so the bright blue line is actually indoor use. And the dark blue line is outdoor use, and the yellow line is total, the, when you, when you add them together. So you could see indoor water use across this group of, you know, 2,000 homes is fairly consistent with, you know, some slight variabilities over time. Outdoor water uses is where you see real variability, where it, it goes down to almost nothing in the winter time, and then during the summertime, it's, it's higher than indoor water use and becomes the dominant feature of, of water use. So if we look at just indoor water use, this is, and this, now we're switching over to gallons per capita per day. And the gallons per capita per day of indoor water use is probably the most comparable value that you could use to compare water use from one place to another, because there's so much biology involved in, in indoor water use. So overall, indoor, Marin's indoor use in this sample was 31.2 gallons per capita per day. And to put that into context, the study that I worked on in 2016 came up with a national indoor average of 54.6 gallons per capita per day. So Marin is substantially lower than that. And frankly, among the lowest indoor per capita uses that, that we see even among all of the, the different cities that, that are participating in the Flume program. Typically, we're seeing more in the range of about 40 gallons per capita per day, maybe 38. Marin really is, this, this sample, this group of homes has exceptionally low indoor water use. If we look at outdoor water use, this is kind of a, there's, there's a bunch of things going on here. At the bottom of the graph, the red bars, those are precipitation. Those are different, different daily or precipitation events that have occurred. But up on top, in the dark blue line, we have average outdoor water use. And then in the, in the orange line, we have, for the same periods of time, evapotranspiration, which is a measurement of how much water do plants need. So, so it's sort of, it's a good, it's a good indication of the, of the water requirement. And what's kind of interesting about this is that the early part of the year, people are applying less water than is required. So in, so there's, there's less water. But then later in the summer, the outdoor water use line exceeds that evapotranspiration line. That's actually where you might have some real potential for conservation is, is trying to, to get people to reduce that outdoor water use when they probably don't need, need to be using quite as much, given what the, what the, what the climate conditions would suggest. So if we think about like, well, what is this telling us about residential water use? First of all, I think it's important to understand that Flume customers are likely to have lower, particularly indoor water use than the general population. The device is, I mean, it, it, it does detect leaks. People find leaks, they fix them. And, and so, so there's no question that, that, that you're seeing probably reduced indoor water use. Here's the percentage breakdown of Flume customers. Because water use has become so efficient at 31, the toilet becomes the dominant use of water indoors, followed by showers and faucets. Clothes washers have become a very small component of indoor water use. Leakage is down to below 4%. In the national studies, leakage is over 15% in some places, and averaged around 12%. So that gives you a sense of, of the, the level of some of the, the reductions that you can get when you actually have a leak detection device. Next slide then. So just drilling down even further, how, like, how much water are toilets using? This is a frequency distribution, so it shows the flush volume, and then the, the number of flushes, or percentage of flushes that occurred. So the majority of flushes were, were below two gallons per flush. Currently, the EPA Water Sense rating is 1.28 gallons per flush. It's also important to understand that even at a five-second resolution level, if someone flushes the toilet and then goes to the faucet and turns it on and washes their hands, that faucet use probably gets counted within the toilet flush. That's why I would expect that the volumetric numbers are slightly elevated versus what they actually are. But you're seeing generally, you know, 90% or more of the toilet flushes are, are at a very efficient range. The showers, so the thing that's, that, that is regulated or for showers is the flow rate. And so the national standard is at two and a half gallons per minute, and then water sense is at two gallons per minute or lower. And so you can see in Marin, you know, the vast majority of showers are taking a much lower flow rate below that. So really, not, not So really, not not much not much savings to be had. And also, research has shown that that particularly people with longer hair are just there is a certain amount of water is required to do the job. And that reducing the flow rate ultimately extends just extends the duration of the shower doesn't actually reduce volume as much. Clothes washers, this is the distribution. Remember, clothes washer only about seven or eight percent of overall water use. And so they're they're just not not nearly the factor that that they used to be. But I do think this is an area where where Flume can improve their disaggregation versus versus some of the work that's been done in the past. Think we're missing perhaps some of the lower volume clothes washers, definitely an area that that I'm I'm working with them on. And then so then some of the some of the things that that are kind of interesting to look at with this data set is because we have the age of the home, we could say, well, is there any difference between old homes and new homes in terms of their indoor or their outdoor water use? And there's two different colored bars here. The darker colored bars at the edges don't have very many homes in those bar and those in those particular bins. And so don't shouldn't should take those with a grain of salt. The bright bars, though, have at least fifteen homes per bin. And so you could see that across this group, you know, the age of the home does not really matter much. And you could have, you know, a home that's eighty, ninety, a hundred years old. And in Marin, it's just as likely to be efficient as a home that's that's only fifteen years old. And you know, that's because of retrofits and and changes in fixtures that that have occurred. And so we can do the same type of analysis on lot size. So as as the lot gets bigger, do you see any differences in water use? And actually, you don't see any difference on the indoor side, but but yes, on the out outdoor side, particularly in those first few bins as you go from five thousand to ten thousand to fifteen thousand to twenty thousand. Yeah, there's a nice stair step function that is exactly what you would expect to see, frankly, as as you know, you have a slightly or bigger property. And then finally, home value, no difference really on indoor water use, except maybe the very, very top. And then on outdoor water use, yes, because it's also quite a surrogate for for lot size. So, you know, another another kind of, I would say, expected finding, but but also an interesting result that 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 you can do. So takeaways. Flume within the within the Marin system, Flume and AMI are extremely complementary. Flume is enabled detailed analysis, but it doesn't cover all the meters in the system, you know, so you really you need it's not really a replacement in any way. Your customers, these residential customers are highly efficient to the extent that that these these represent the broader population at all. You have you have extremely efficient, particularly indoor water use, but outdoor water use is also lower than than in many other places. Toilet flush volumes demonstrating a high level of efficiency. Older homes are just as likely to be as efficient as newer ones by and large, particularly indoors. And and things like, you know, the value of the home and the lot size do have an an impact on on the the amount of outdoor water use that that you see. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Hopefully, we got through this fast enough.
We'll pause there. Are there any questions from the board on the Flume data?
Good. Peter, thank you very much for that presentation. And it's it's very interesting data that you're able to gather from the Flume devices. This, Carrie, this might be more of a question for you in terms of average cost of an AMI system per household versus Flume. Irregardless of the, I guess, the grant funding. So if you just had to buy it outright, what would that be about?
For single family homes, it's about between two hundred and fifty and three hundred dollars for depending on if you have to replace the entire meter, the register and the the meter, the register and the AMI, like the 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 three components, right? So if you have to replace them all, there's a variable. But on average, we were looking at during our grant about three hundred dollars per site.
So just a little bit more than the the Flume piece then.
Correct.
Okay. And is AMI outside of the operational component of us knowing the district, knowing the water use? Is there any other benefit over the Flume? Or the cost?
The the benefit of AMI would be that it the customer doesn't have to make a choice to install it and maintain it, right? It would be on the district. And so it would make it district wide, allowing for everyone to have that opportunity to see their water use. And it gives us an opportunity also to engage with them to promote signing onto the portal and setting up those leak alerts and allowing them to kind of do some of the work that that we staff currently has to do to engage with customers if they do potentially have a leak.
It almost seems like if you combine the two products together, that would be the perfect silver bullet here. I guess my question would be, is is AMI moving towards the same type of capabilities that Flume has or they remain parallel?
Right. So so AMI, you can have a a shorter read, a more frequent read. Similar to maybe not down to five seconds, but but more frequent than fifteen minutes. The battery life is then the compromise. And so you're kind of, you know, Flume devices battery life is about eighteen months to two years. And so needing to go out and constantly change batteries, if you had your AMI system, collecting that level of data would be cost prohibitive.
Gotcha. That's all I had. Thank you.
My thanks as well, Peter. Super interesting. Just a couple of questions on the AMI sample. Peter, you showed that although about twenty five hundred Flume units have been purchased, only about a thousand are connected. And I was but your the data you're showing is from was from twenty five hundred Flume units, I believe. So just.
So there were twenty three in the study analysis. We've incentivized twenty five hundred. And so the difference between those two are the attrition. So whether it's battery life that they haven't replaced their battery and they're there in their meter box dead, or they're no longer connected to the wifi, therefore the data wasn't being collected and included in the analysis. So there's work to be done on both fronts to notify customers of battery change out necessity and also that their their wifi bridge may have disconnected. And if they want to continue receiving the data, they need to, you know, log it back in and fix that problem.
Yeah, I mean, it looked like currently we're only at about a thousand connected. There was the one colored, different colors on the on the graph.
Right. Yes. And that's again, not everybody bought a Flume on day one, you know, the the part the the time of installation has occurred over over a period of time. And so, you know, you start with a few and then it grows. But then over time, some of there's also the attrition rate. So these there's this combination of factors that create that curve.
I I think the attrition is 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 important to note. I've set up a Flume device. It's amazing to start. But I can also see that, you know, as we get used to it, we start paying less attention to it in our household. And we may not even know when the battery fails because we're starting to look at it less and less frequently as we've changed our water use consumption habits. So the other fact that, you know, the it's also important to to note that the Flume device relies on a personal wifi network. But in contrast, AMI would require whether we depending on the signal capture system we use, it may require additional either, you know, cell towers or this additional infrastructure to capture AMI signals.
It would, but it wouldn't be reliant on customer
Right.
wifi.
Right. Right. Just just we know that the sample size of about twenty three hundred that was analyzed from the Flume study were not you know, randomly selected. I'm but they're likely biased towards households that are quite keen to manage their water consumption. So beyond having lower leaks, they could it, we could be getting a lower a, you know, a maybe a sense of consumption that's lower than actual because we're looking at customers that are very aware.
I think they I think particularly indoor use is is lower. But, you know, I have also worked with looked at Marin billing consumption, you know, and and, you know, where we look at the whole sample. And e- even when you look across all single family customers, I think you can confidently say that that it's you're ready at a greater level of efficiency than many other comparable agencies.
That's a great point, Peter. Of course, we have consumption data from our bills. So we should we should be able to cross reference the Flume data against what we're getting from the bills really easily. How do we know per capita consumption?
So from the Flume data, we know it because people report the number of people in the home when they fill out the preliminary survey. And and not everyone answers that, but more than ninety percent of the people do. And so that's when the ones that do, then we calculate per capita use. Then for for wait, but for Marin, when you wanted to know your per capita use, you would use the average number of people per household, you know, from the census data. And that's also a very good way of estimating per capita use.
And we also have a methodology that the state is assigned to us for compliance with SB seven dash seven X, which is a twenty percent reduction by the year twenty twenty. So to calculate our population. So the state is actually established for us for our service area. How we should be calculating population. And we use that numbers to to determine our per capita.
Right. The 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 misalignment between outdoor water use and actual water requirements in the summer is really interesting. You know, I'm sure, Carrie, you're going to be talking about, you know, given that we're already at a relatively low level of water consumption comparatively. You know, finding the opportunities for additional gains is is harder for us maybe than some other suppliers. But if there are ways, you know, and and there's obviously a lot of concern among rate payers about man being able to maintain their you know, their landscape. So if there are ways to improve the efficiency of irrigation, that would be quite encouraging, you know. I don't know what technologies would allow us to do that. I know there's moisture sensors and and things for the ground. Maybe my last come, it's this is serious stuff. It's really important, obviously, but it's hard not to think about messaging around maybe composting toilets and haircuts. But let's not go there.
That's great. All right. Thank you, Peter, for for joining us this morning. We're going to move on now to the additional incentives that that we have currently in place. We've had a toilet replacement program since the mid nineties. We've replaced well, over fifty thousand toilets, whether between policy and incentives. You think the graph on the right really tells the story of reaching saturation. So the staff recommendation is to sunset the is to bring back the board a an an action item to sunset the high efficiency toilet rebate based on the Flume saturation data we're seeing and also low participation and the the number of rebates and and change outs we've already seen within the district and that there's other opportunities to focus these resources on in in other programs that would be potentially more effective. Another incentive we wanted to to mention is our clothes washer rebate, again, longstanding rebate program. Clothes washers are kind of interesting because the Energy Commission is actively involved in establishing continuing progressive code standards for both water and energy. And so those those codes are really driving market transformation in just what you can purchase on the marketplace is already very efficient. So what we're seeing is that it's likely many of our rebate program participants are free riders. And what that means is that they go to the store, they purchase a clothes washer, and then they hear about a rebate and yay, they qualify, so they'll take our money. But our rebate didn't drive them to make that decision of a more efficient model. And so based on having this program in place for for many, many, many years, decades, in fact, the staff recommendation is to sunset this rebate based on low participation, high saturation, and recognizing that free riders are are likely the majority of participants within our our rebate program. Closing out, the final one before we get board comments would be the hot water recirculating rebate. So this is a device that's installed in the fixture furthest from your water heater. It's a fifty dollar rebate offered that we we launched as part of our drought response. We get about three rebates a month. What we've heard from customers who participate in this rebate program is that if they have to wait a long time for hot water, it makes a big difference to them. But it's very site specific, right? It's not going to be something that we could, you know, offer to the masses and guarantee a high level of savings. Because we've had such low participation, we haven't been able to do an in depth analysis yet, right, to see whether or not it makes sense to maintain this incentive across the board. But as we, you know, it's only been in place for about a year now, just over a year. And so we'll continue to conduct this evaluations and we'll bring that back to the board as well if there's an opportunity to either, you know, make change to the rebate, whether it's up, down, or, you know, maybe, you know, focus on certain customer classes only as well. So summary. We do continue to build important and meaningful regional partnerships where we see there's multi benefits. Refinements or incentive programs are ongoing. We want to break down barriers of alternative water sources, rainwater and groundwater specifically, but really any of our programs. We recognize that rainwater and gray water really complimentary, but are like unlikely to offset all of outdoor water use for our customers. We heard from Peter that Flume and AMI are both really effective tools in leak detection and also giving us data fixture and data analysis. Our customers are very water efficient, especially indoor for residential customers. And finally, the two staff recommendations would be to redirect the resources for toilet and clothes washers to other programs. And so I'll pause there and see if there's any comments.
I just want to say, first off, thank you for constantly analyzing these because it's, you know, as we evolve, especially in this field, it's good to be able to sunset the ones that don't make sense and continue to support it. Not a not a comment, but a just a future request that, you know, we talked about the indoor residential use efficiency. It'd be good to start seeing some of the outdoor use efficiency as we move forward. So we have a better understanding of the total water use. But
That's great. Carrie, I was, you know, despite the low demand for the toilet and clothes clothes wash washer rebates. I was wondering if there was any downside to just keeping them on the books. But then I but that also then means we I would imagine have to allocate a certain budget for that. That is semi restricted for those activities. So it gives us a little bit less flexibility with our incentives programs if we're keeping them on the books.
And it's staff time to maintain the system and explain to customers why they don't qualify or why they, you know. Yes, they went to the store and they bought a new clothes washer, but it it doesn't meet our rebate requirement. So it's just kind of the ongoing maintenance of the program as well. But it is fairly low participation. So it's not a significant impact necessarily to budgets, more of staffing resources is the
Okay. And the decision on this, this would this would be something that comes to the full board for consideration.
Correct.
Got it. I agree with Matt that it's so helpful to be, you know, on top of what's working, what's maybe less efficient, less cost effective. I didn't understand your comment about the hot water recirculation being site specific. If you could just explain that.
Right. So if you have a home, the way if your home is built in a in a way that your water heater is kind of centralized, and it's not, you know, out in the garage far removed, then it's unlikely that you're waiting very long for hot water. And this type of system wouldn't provide much value or benefit to you. It's it really is dependent on the layout of your home and where your water fixtures are.
Okay, so it's not that the installation is only feasible in some areas. It's that the the gains to be realized vary quite a bit.
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to code and regulations. So we finished up incentives. Very important, you know, off to to provide incentives to offer to our customers. But codes and regulations really ensure long term savings as well. And so it's 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 important to have both. I wanted to start with our water waste prohibitions. And these are in place during every year, normal, dry, what have you, regardless of water supply conditions. And I included them because it's worth recognizing that they're industry leading in both reach and intent, specifically when we look at the limitation on number of watering days within the community. And so over the course of the last two major droughts, we've retained some of these one of those water waste prohibitions that we had put in place. And you we can see them here. Our landscape plan review is a requirement for all new construction and rehabilitated landscapes to comply with ensuring that when landscapes are installed within our community, they are as efficient as possible. We don't just review the plans and stamp them and send them back. We actually go out and do a final inspection as well to confirm that they're installed per the approved plan set. There are challenges with this, as with almost everything, right? There's always challenges. That we're not the land use planning agency. And so it really requires a high level of coordination to have the cities and local jurisdictions notify the applicants early in the process to send them our way and ensure that we are included in in that review process. So it's it's ongoing education. There's lots of turnover and we're trying to find ways to embed Um so it's it's ongoing education. There's lots of turnover and we're trying to find ways to embed um our process into their systems in a in a easy way, right? We don't want to put more work on them, but we want to make sure that that all customers are that should be coming to us for a plan review are in fact doing so. We have other uh district codes uh intended to maximize water efficiency, everything from pressure regulation all the way down to fixture um efficiency standards. The bottom to the gray water um code requirements and then non-functional turf. I have some additional slides on, so so we'll take a deeper dive into those um at this time, starting with gray water. So back in May of twenty sixteen, again, very forward thinking, right? Early unprecedented um for a water utility to have established a gray water ordinance back in twenty sixteen. Now it's fairly, it's more common, but um definitely forward thinking. It requires a uh installation of a gray water system for any new service or any enlarged service that is considered a quote unquote substantial remodel. Substantial remodel is defined by the county and it's any uh time a the fifty percent of the square foot of the of the original site is impacted by the remodel. So we again so established in twenty sixteen, but starting in about twenty twenty, we began to maintain a database of how many customers are actually going through this and complying. Complying with it, meaning installing a gray water system as opposed to um doing a self-certification determining it's not feasible. So we had two hundred and seventy-two sites that would have been subject to the gray water ordinance. Of those twenty-eight installed the system. The remaining ninety percent um submitted a self-certification justification saying that it was not feasible. You can see the ju- the reasons they provided um at the bottom there, fifty percent just said it wasn't a good fit. Twenty-five percent said that they weren't changing any of their landscaping, therefore installing, you know, where would that water kind of go if they did install the system? Because they weren't going to change their their irrigation or their landscaping. Twenty percent thought that they um had a real or perceived conflict to the rules, meaning maybe proximity to creeks and streams or neighbors. There there's, you know, again, a number of codes that they would have to comply with. Five percent said the cost was too high. And so in November, um after completing that analysis of of uh whether or not and why folks uh did not participate in the program or did not um actually install a gray water system. We worked with a independent building code consultant that was actually paid for by the California Energy Commission using their reach code financing. Again, this was very kind of forward thinking, having a gray water code. And so they offered to help support us and understand what changes could be made to increase um the effectiveness of of that regulation. Essentially, what they did is said, you know, instead of just doing a self-certification, documentation needs to be provided. And which makes a whole lot of sense. Um so we've we've launched that, made that administrative change. Since November first, it's decreased to fifty-six percent of the sites are saying that um installing gray water is not feasible. So better than the ninety percent, but still a gap um and an and an opportunity to look at, well, is the gray water um ordinance, um should it be retained in place as is, or should we look at other options and other um compliance um opportunities? So to do this, we look at others, um local jurisdictions, codes and standards. Tucson is really the only other um jurisdiction, water utility we we could find that has a gray water or ray water requirement in there um for new connections. We looked at what they've done. We also looked at some federal and state standards, looking at EPA Water Sense New Home specifications, which requires a third-party certification. Again, it would be additional cost to both the cities and the district and the 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 customer. So kind of set that one aside. The other would be Cal Green Building Standards um that seemed to actually get some traction until we looked at what their their options for compliance were. They offered both indoor and outdoor options, which is which is beneficial, right? We want to reduce water use across the board, however, whatever makes sense. Um but they did have some really what I would call easy outs, if you would, such as installing a kitchen faucet aerator would be one elective, one of the two. Installing a um energy store clothes washer or energy star dishwasher. So likely those would be done anyway. So it's not really driving demands down or increasing efficiency on site. It's not at all focused on outdoor use either. There was no requirement for focusing on outdoor use. And so we set those aside and staff developed a proposal to increase the options for um compliance with the gray water ordinance. And that would be um to require one of the following for all new connections or substantial remodels. They could either install all the water use drought tolerant plant material. They could install a gray water system, a rainwater system, or use recycled water. And so um and like the fifty-six percent are still not are still saying, you know, it doesn't make sense for me to have a gray water system. Okay, well, let's give them some other options and see what um whether or not that makes more sense as far as um reach. And so I'll stop here and see if there's there's interest or thoughts on this proposal. Or I could just keep moving.
Maybe just, sorry, Matt.
I I just, it seemed I was um caught off guard a little bit by Tucson, the only one relying on, especially in the West. I mean, that seems like others would be moving towards this. Is there any talk about other districts looking at the same thing we're doing? Or is Tucson really the one that's out in front?
Tucson is is really the only one that 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 is out in front as far as requiring it as part of connecting. Um other water utilities are really just starting to offer the incentives and it's generally goes where you offer the incentive and then you move into the the regulatory piece, right? And so um many utilities are just starting to can just offer incentives, so.
And those numbers, the gray water system, if I looked at it right, out of the two hundred and seventy-two, was it roughly eighteen percent were just laundry to landscape? So you're looking only a six percent reduction in all of those properties. Um this, the fifty-six percent of the folks that still say their site's not feasible, are those other, the remainder, are they actually moving forward with the system? Are they finding another excuse to get around it?
The fifty-six percent are saying it's not feasible. They're not being required to install anything because they're providing the documentation to justify why it's that it's it's not, won't work on their site.
Okay, that was it. Thank you.
Yeah, Carrie, I just wanted to note that I think expanding the ordinance to these additional options, that makes a lot of sense because the fifty percent of our um of the clients are saying that it's not feasible to put in gray water. Being able to then ask for other um changes seems like a good way to go. So uh yeah, this this makes sense.
So with all of these proposals and staff recommendations, of course, they'll all come back to the full board where it's really just opportunity to get input for staff to know what kind of direction we should be moving in.
Ron, you can ask one more question. Sorry, Carrie, just one more. Looking at these four here. So I think um, you know, I should have touched on, so I apologize my for not getting into it a second ago. But I think these are really good options to have for folks, giving them another opportunity to get to the same place we'd want them to go. It'd be helpful if we understood roughly the costs associated with that, something like the connection of recycled water to a home or, you know, what kind of minimum rainwater harvesting, we would get sixty-five percent available roof out of that a five thousand gallon cistern, something along those lines. So we have an understanding of what kind of impact it would be financially to the folks.
Yeah, that's great. We can do that. Okay, moving on to non-functional turf. Um so in March of twenty twenty-two, the board adopted an ordinance that prohibited the irrigation of non-functional turf with district water. What this ordinance also did was define non-functional turf, and we made sure to include that it and to specify that it was non-residential landscapes that were not recreation areas, right? So we really want to focus in on um areas that are not being utilized um in a meaningful way. This was adopted and and is included as part of our landscape plan review process, right? So anyone who's going through plan review has to comply with this. I wanted to mention that as part of our turf conversion rebate, we have an easement requirement for commercial customers um to ensure that if we pay them to take their lawn out, that they won't be able to replant that lawn. Um again, right? We won't, we only want to pay for it once. Uh this was developed in May of twenty twenty-one. And what we're finding is that um customers are um pulling out of our programs when they learn that they have to go through this process because they have to notarize this easement, file it with the county assessor. They feel like there's a a it's then on, right? It's permanently there, even though there's really no legal can vouch for me on this one. There's really no, you know, burden to them necessarily. It's more of a notification. Um but nevertheless, they feel that could impact property value. We've had folks not only pull out of the program and do it on their, you know, actually take out their turf and do the project on their own. They're they're not doing that. They're stepping away from our our project and our our program and leaving their non-functional turf in place. And so with the non-functional turf ordinance that was passed after we had developed this easement process, um the non-functional turf ordinance really captures and ensures that those sites will never be replanted with turf again. And so instead of maintaining, you know, this um notarized easement process changes underway to remove that requirement and just allow the non-functional turf ordinance to meet the goal of the easement. So it should remove one of the barriers for our customers and hopefully get more um folks kind of going through our rebates, taking out non-functional turf. So it's a little bit of a sidebar, but I wanted to make sure y'all knew about it. Um so looking at existing non-functional turf, we have um about thirty-five acres that have been identified within the service area, tw- two hundred and fifty unique sites. And the potential water savings about hundred and sixty-four acre feet per year. So as a reminder, as part of the water conservation element, we have um a goal of seventy thousand square feet per year and the um potential water savings of eight acre feet per year. Each year as we replace those with the total cumulative water savings there of of about four thousand acre feet. During prior board meetings, there was a opportunity or a a presentation on um potentially expediting the conversion of these non-functional turf landscapes. Um, you know, a bit faster instead of the the twenty forty-five target that that's part of the water conservation element. One way this could work would be to kind of look at what Southern Nevada Water Authority did, which is establishing a date that it needs to be converted. The the landscape would need to be converted by and offer incentives, meaningful incentives over a course of the years and kind of reduce those incentives once you get to year four. So for example, I did a four-year process here. Years one and two, we'd offer three dollars a square foot potentially. Year three, a dollar square foot, and then in year four, no incentive would be available. The idea being to drive customers to can take action early on in the in the process. Um and then we could then review in year four whether or not, you know, what type and if any um enforcement would need to be developed and and considered. If we did go down this path, of course, we'd want to notify all of our customers and we'd also want to let, make sure that our supply houses, our landscape supply houses were aware that this would be coming and happening because it would um require a lot of of resources from them as well, right? Well, we don't want the 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 excuse to say I can't take out my non-functional turf because I can't um put any other plant material in because it's not available or, you know, there's 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 supply chain issue. So that would be um one other item. Before I get input on this, I do want to just mention some regulation and and legislation that's currently under development that's kind of aligns with what we're can we're we're discussing here. The state emergency regulation that was adopted in May of twenty twenty-two was a ye- one-year ban on the use of potable water for irrigation of non-functional turf. The state state just notified um utilities that they'll be extending that for one additional year um through June of twenty twenty-four. So um that will will be continuing even though um the drought, right, statewide drought is not is no longer in place. The other item is AB fifteen seventy-two, which would direct uh state agencies, specifically a state water resources control board to eliminate irrigation of non-functional turf with potable water. I do want to note that this does, this bill does apply to multifamily residential and commercial customers. So we're working with the we, Aqua and others are working with the state author, the the legislative author to hopefully bring some additional understanding of the impacts of multifamily customers if they were to prohibit non-functional turf in multifamily residential sector. Um but we'll see if we get any movement on that. And so with that, we have recommendation to change the gray water ordinance. We've heard comments on, appreciate that. Um we are removing the easement requirement for the turf conversion rebate. And then finally, if there's any comments on the non-functional turf ordinance to expedite conversion, um I would appreciate them.
Looking at the the non-functional turf ordinance um and rough math, so please help me out if I'm way off on here. But with one point five million square feet of non-functional turf um in the commercial sector here in our service area, if we took that and gave the full three dollar benefit, we're at four and a half million, then divide that by a cumulative cumulative uh savings per year of forty-five hundred acre feet, we're looking at about a thousand dollars an acre foot for water. Roughly. So in terms of a supply piece, that seems to be relatively inexpensive for that. I I do think there's a balance here, though, that these are commercial property owners that are going to be having a significant reduction in their bills. So I think, uh, you know, looking at that balance between how much we'd incentivize them to take out in terms of a savings piece would be interesting as well. Because at three dollars a square foot, it'd be interesting to see how much they're paying for their water bill now and then how that evens out uh to some extent too, but I'm I'm not sure I'm ready to look to to mandate it. Um but at the same time, I I do think the continued incentive incentivization and then also the explanation of the the cost savings that these property owners would would realize uh every month or every two months would be would be very beneficial.
Great, great points. I I hadn't thought about the cost savings to the uh commercial or commercial customers. Is that something that uh I I don't know, Carrie, at this point, if that's something that you present to commercial customers when you discuss the uh you know, the the turf replacement program?
Not yet, but it is certainly on our list of things to do, right? I mean, that that would be a good motivation for them potentially, if we can get to the owner so that they will listen to what the savings potential would be, right? That's one of our challenges, getting the right person. Um but yes, that was absolutely, that would one, another reason for them to make the change.
What is the timeline for potentially revise revising the uh non-functional turf ordinance?
That would be at the board's discretion. There's interest. We can work on putting it together and bring it back or otherwise we can table it till we know what happens with the regulations and legislation to take action. It's
It'll it'll be good to hear from Matt. Matt, you've already noted that uh a uh mandatory program may not be optimum in uh increasing the uh or adjusting the incentive structure to speed up replacement, voluntary replacement uh may be a a good place to land. Uh I would, I would suggest that we try to move um on this quickly and and bring something to the board or discussion.
No, and I agree, and I just want to clarify, I think that um to Ronji, your comments earlier about being a very efficient county in terms of water use already and finding places where we can still make those big gains. I believe this is one of them. So I'd like to continue to explore this. I just want to make sure we understand the uh the impacts to both us and then the business owner.
So so Carrie, I don't know if that was clear, but definitely, you know, uh continuing to maintain attention on all of the option, you know, all of the items that you've listed here um and ensuring that the we're moving these along with the board, I think, uh is advisable.
Very good. Thank you. Moving along. All right, we're moving on to community engagement. So this, of course, right, we have our incentives, we have our regulation, but making sure customers understand where to find us and what our offerings are and why they should be listening um is uh is is also important piece. Our conservation assistance program is our cap program, right? And so this is included in um our strategic water supply assessment, but I wanted to provide a little bit more information on what it is. Um it's a, it's a service that's offered to all of our water customers, although it's primarily residential customers that do participate. Staff goes to their home or or site and teaches them how to read their water meter, how to read their water bill, pre-qualifies them for rebates. Um it's really an opportunity to, you know, one-on-one with district staff to find leaks and and understand their water use and what their opportunities are. Um to, our goal is five hundred site visits per year. We also have the Marin Master Gardener Program, very similar to CAPS, but it's really focused on landscaping. So when we get a call from a customer that says, I don't know what to install and I want to take my lawn out. Instead of having our staff go out, we direct them to the master gardener so they can do that handholding of what plants make sense, you know, what is a fire safe landscaping? But you know, all of the key components that someone should be considering when they're when they're um looking at changing their landscape. So it's a, it's a, it's a great partnership with the master gardeners we've had in place for um close to a decade. We have a garden grant program where we offer five thousand dollars for community organizations to create publicly accessible garden projects with the goal of educating and inspiring the public around native plants and uh climate appropriate landscapes. We have two um new installations listed here, one at Dominican College. It's kind of washed out, but on there is a rain there, a cistern up in the back corner of that that project. It's going to look great once it's filled in. And then we also have a central Marin police station um also participated. And so we continue to look for for sites um that, you know, have signage and recognize us, but also recognize the um the value and benefits to our community so they can be fleet, willing to take action on their own as well to do the similar types of landscape installations. We attend a number of sponsors. We attend a number of sponsored events um throughout the year. Uh, Adrian will touch on kind of specifics around what events we've we've been to, but we want to just recognize, you know, whether it's an educational workshop or professional training, we're there out in the community, providing resources, hardware, literature, answering questions, all of those pieces to to continue to engage with our customers. We have a really robust water education program. And we offer materials from grades K through twelve. And we also offer classroom presentations for that same range. So um, you know, we can go one day in kindergarten and then that afternoon we're at high school, you know, um biology class, talking about, you know, all things water. We are bringing back our Zune Zune assemblies this coming uh school year. We'll be doing twenty of those. We're doing this in partnership with Marin Clean Energy. They're um co-funding the 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 assembly with us and it's a uh water energy. So saving water saves energy. And all of the the point of all of these assemblies, right, is to get your or all of these this outreach is have those kids when they go home and their parents are I'm not aware of water use, right, to kind of remind them. And we found that um very effective. We also have our Water Walk Field Trip, uh taking kids up to the watershed. Um, it really had increasing the understanding of where your water comes from is want to build that ethic of of uh appreciation for for water within our region. Each year, we have an eco-friendly garden tour. It happens in May. We do this in partnership with the Sonoma Marin Saving Water Partnership, which is the group of all of the um everyone who buys water from Sonoma Water is part of the Sonoma Marin Saving Water Partnership. Within our service area, we tend to have about five, five gardens. Um, the partnership does a really great job of finding other ways to motivate folks, not just to go look at at at, you know, pretty gardens. But they'll do plant sales and soil compost distribution. This year they had a scavenger hunt, right? Just new ways to engage customers and and we're thrilled to be part of that each year. When we look at partnerships, I've mentioned um a number of them already today, so I'll just touch on a few more, looking at direct distribution and discount programs. Not only do we work with folks like Flume, which are, you know, national companies, we also look work with local companies like the Urban Farmer Store for our Gray Water Kit Distribution and offering webinars. We recently um just completed a research project with UC Riverside um on hotel water use and demand rebounds post drought. So once that's finalized, um we'll 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 distribute that. But, you know, we always are looking for new opportunities to to understand our water use patterns within our community so that we can uh create meaningful programs around it and also support industry-wide, right? Understanding how water used to go is being used. Looking at trainings, folks like Resilient Neighborhoods, which is great, right? Because it's not district staff. You know, being the talking head telling folks how they should be using their water use, it's community neighbor to neighbor. Um, not only looking at water, but energy, you know, fire resiliency, all of it, the whole gamut. Um, and it's it's a really, it's a great program because then it's um it's close to home, which is great. And now finally, we'll turn over to Adrian here from 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 her on uh other outreach activities.
Thanks, Carrie. Uh, good morning, directors. Adrian Mertens, Communications and Public Affairs Manager. Um, so I'm going to jump right into uh giving a brief overview of what we've been up to uh with our outreach, um specifically around water efficiency programs over uh the last quarter. Um, and really, this is reflective of the type of outreach we've been doing over the last year. Um, so in the last quarter, we've had sixty seven social media posts that are directly um highlighting our water efficiency programs. That's across our four social media platforms, Twitter, Nextdoor, Facebook and Instagram. Um, we've also highlighted our programs seventeen times in our monthly e-news um and had eight callouts as well in our spring and summer on the waterfront. Um, a quarterly bill insert that goes in all of our customers' water bills. Um, we also had two earned media occurrences highlighting our programs. I've shown one of them here. Both were in the Marin IJ in the lifestyle section. Um, they're earned media, meaning we don't pay um for those promotions and the news are actually covered in news stories. And this was a great one and actually um was written by PJ Premier, but um highlighted um one of the sites that was part of the eco-friendly garden tour um that uh we collaborated with the Sonoma Marin Water Saving Partnership on. Uh, Carrie mentioned it earlier, but this individual um had transformed their yard um and uh utilized our rebate programs as part of that transformation. And so highlighted that here. Um, and then we've also participated in seven weekend outreach events, that's having a booth out at other events in the community, going to where people are. Um, and that's just in the last couple of months, and that's addition to the webinars and other educational opportunities that Carrie mentioned. Um, and at those events, we're distributing our literature, we're giving away our uh water efficiency fixtures um and answering questions from the community um about how they can reduce their water use at home. And and then this is a look at a couple more focused campaigns that we've done in the last quarter. Um, we did a Fix a Leak Week messaging campaign. This is actually a national campaign. It's annual um put on by EPA Water Sense um and water utilities across the country, um spend some extra focus time um promoting uh ways at home to uh detect leaks um and try to get those fixed, highlighting um how much water savings can come out of leak detection. And so um we participated in this across our channels um promoting this to our customers. And we also did um a pretty intense garden tours and walks promotion. Um, uh specifically for the eco-friendly garden tour, um we had three sites um that were featured in Marin. Um, there were seventeen total between Sonoma and Marin. We did some paid advertising in the Marin IJ, um an advertising series actually in print um for that. Uh, we also participated in the dye tablet challenge. Um, this was a uh a challenge that the uh Sonoma Marin Partnership um put together. Um, it was inviting our customers um in both Sonoma and Marin um to check for leaks in their toilet using our dye tablet leak detection um tools that we give away for free to customers. Um, just uh utility districts in Sonoma do as well. And so we had some joint messaging on that. Um, and those that participated and reported back had a chance at a gift card, and that was uh ran during the month of March. Um, and then we've done some educational opportunity promotion. Carrie was just talking about our partners that we work with. Um, we've worked with a Slope Gardening Center um this year and last year to put on a Water Smart Gardening Series. And then we create the promotional material for that and provide it to Slope so they can advertise directly to their customers. And then we're using that material to advertise to our customers through our channels as well. Um, and then I mentioned we've been, um, well, actually in two weeks, we'll have been at seven events this quarter um on the weekends. I'm happy to report this year and we we had a goal of um trying to hit, make sure we hit all five of our division, um our district divisions um so that we were spreading ourselves around and reaching all areas of the community. And we will have done that um in the next two weeks. We've been at a number of different events, um again, passing out our materials and talking to our customers about um how they can achieve more water savings at home. Um, and then I just wanted to note a few highlights from some of that outreach activity. And we had two thousand two hundred nineteen unique visitors to Marinwater.org forward slash rebates. That's our home landing page where all of our rebate programs um are detailed and where you also can sign up um and apply for each of them. So that's the ninth most popular webpage this spring. I wanted to put that note on there because I do think that that is um uh a metric that we can continue to work on um and build and and as we move forward into some additional marketing and targeted focus that I'm going to talk about here in just a few minutes. Um, that's an area that we want to watch closely and get that number up. Um, in May, we featured our Cash for Gas GRAS program in our e-news. Um, and uh our water efficiency team reported back to us that they actually had seven new Cash for GRAS applications and within a twelve-day span after that going out. Um, in that dye tablet challenge um that we did as part of the partnership work, the Sonoma Marin Partnership work. And we actually had one in five of our participants report back that they found a leak through that um through that activity. Um, and then we had eight eighty-five eco-friendly garden tour participants just at the San Rafael site. Um, again, there were seventeen sites sold total this between Sonoma and Marin. Um, I think there were in total over four thousand um RSVPs um for the entire tour, not meaning that everyone went to every site um for that effort. Um, and then I wanted to mention our resources um that are currently in circulation and offered to our customers. Um, we have a number of conservation tips and brochures. Those are housed on our website, but we also have printable versions that we pass out at our events and at our front lobby. We have our weekly watering schedule. Um, that's the mobile device there. Um, it comes as an email. Um, but this is during the irrigation system, uh irrigation season is put together by our staff each week. It goes out on Fridays and those that subscribe get some customized uh recommendations on um how to set their irrigation schedule for that week. It's based on um projected forecasts, um moisture levels um and uh tailors for the type of irrigation system that you have and your type of plants as well. And so we're always continuing to um encourage customers to subscribe for that if they want some extra help from some of our staff experts. Um, and then we have materials available for restaurants and hotels. Uh, there's a table tent card in the middle on the top row there. Um, that one's for restaurants, um but we print these and make them available uh for those businesses to utilize. Um, just helping them with communicating to their customers ways that they can save water um while they're uh dining in the restaurants or staying in their hotels. Um, and then uh we have a watershed approach to landscaping book. Um, it's very extensive, comprehensive, um for those looking to make transformations to their yard or just upgrades and improvements on best practices for that. Um, that'll help them to save water as well. Um, and then we have home serving um guides as well as plumbing guides, um a Water Smart Gardening Resource Center that's online with lots of different curated information um on ways to improve your yard um and your water uh water savings in your yard. And then we have all of our water efficiency fixtures um that we provide to customers. Those are available at our lobby. I have a uh photo up there um with a poster um and customers can drop in and take advantage of um showerheads, aerators, hose naughtles, and then our leak detection tablets as well. Um, and then I also have on there our Conservation Assistance Program brochure. We just recently updated that. Um, Carrie talked about that program um a few slides ago. Um, and this way we can take it out to events and communicate with our customers about that service that's available to them. Um, and then as we're looking forward, I wanted to spend a few minutes telling you about some of our plans, Carrie and I um and the rest of the teams. Um, I have been thinking through what's next. Um, we, you know, since the during the drought, we did boost our advertising campaign, but it was really around this mass marketing effort of we're in an emergency, we need to save water, everybody do what you can. And it was one single message. Um, and we used our channels available to us and that and also put um extra uh dollars into marketing or into our advertising. Um, and so now we are going to continue mass marketing through our readily available channels. Um, a lot of those I've talked about are social media, our e-news, our bill inserts. We're going to continue our grassroots efforts to engage with customers at point of purchase and out in the community at events. Um, but we're also going to be looking at developing new campaign strategies to target market our programs um based on customer segmentations. And so that's really kind of changing the way a little bit um that we've talked to our customers less like a water utility and maybe looking at it a little bit more like a business methodology. Um, and so again, while not losing the first two efforts, um we're going to be kind of taking things a step for forward with how we look to move the needle on water reduction with our customers. And so um to accomplish that, um, we're going to be using some ArcGIS Esri demographic data. Um, and that's really location-based behavioral data, um which will help us kind of determine our top market segments. Um, we'll be able to understand um their motivations, their characteristics, um what, what, where they spend their money. Um, and so uh Esri demographic data, it's available as layers on GIS mapping. Um, it's compiled from census and American community survey data, um which is also done by the Census, uh the US Census Bureau each year. Um, it really focuses on consumer lifestyle, spending behaviors and motivators. And at this Esri data actually um divides up US neighborhoods into sixty-seven different market segments. Um, and so we'll be taking a look at that data um within our service area and figuring out where we have the most potential um to achieve water savings with customers. And so in addition to the taking the Esri demographic data, we're going to then build on that um through doing some additional targeted survey through our um to our customers. Um, as it relates to our conservation programs um and their home water efficiency practices. Um, and then combine those two things to help us kind of customize and develop uh new marketing strategies and campaigns to reach these customers. Um, and so once we've established where we want to focus our efforts, what those campaigns might look like. Um, obviously, we want to try to speak to people in a way that's going to motivate them um and make them connect to the programs and services that we offer. And obviously, that's not going to be the same for all of our customers. Um, and then uh we'll be looking to do this in a multi-faceted way through direct mailers to where those people are through digital targeted ads. Um, it could be PSAs on streaming services. And we will be working with a marketing consultant um to help us develop um different materials and campaigns and some of the strategies for this. Um, but really, it's about trying to advertise to where our customers are um and with messages that um what they can really connect with. And then to give you an idea of timing for this, um, oh, that I did change that, but it didn't make it. That should be an eight-month plan, not a six-month plan. Um, that's right. Um, but so um we're already getting going on on kind of our, the demographic data research um and we'll be putting a customer survey together. Um, so that's happening in June and July. The customer survey will run in July. Um, and then we will be developing our new marketing campaign materials in August, September with a September launch of the new campaign materials. Um, and then um in February, we'll have uh six months of the campaign under our belt. Um, and so we'll do a performance review at that time. We actually have a committee meeting scheduled that month month as well. Um, so we'll be able to report out on how things are going, um take in feedback and make some adjustments um from there to continue the campaign. And I can stop there for questions.
One question, but I think it's important to note the the amount of effort that you and the team are putting in for all this stuff, so that doesn't go unnoticed. So thank you. And I think it's a direct result of why our average indoor use is so low here in the county. But um in terms of the the messaging piece, it would be helpful for for me to include um the rate calculator, keeping that available on the website and then looking at some sort of information about, you know, if you reduce by this, this is how your rate will be reduced as well and allow people to use that as a tool to help saying, wow, if I buy this, I can save this. So it would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. The um the marketing, the design of this marketing strategy is fascinating. Um, and the fact that you'll be doing uh surveys to collect data from different demographic groups to understand which messages resonate the most. That's, that's really encouraging. I hope you'll let us know what what are the different messages that you will be testing, for example, impacts on your water bill, as as Matt just noted. Um, I think, you know, a dominant message for many of us has always been about conserving a precious resource. But more and more, we're hoping to also help the public understand that demand reduction uh reduces the amount of uh infrastructure development we have to take on. And then looking beyond that, which you mentioned there, you know, there's sustainable living. It's on your slide. Uh, I think most of us know that our s- carbon footprint, the single largest contributor to our carbon footprint is our home. But m- most of us probably don't see water supply as a component of that carbon footprint. So you know, if there are So, you know, if there are opportunities to test the impact of that message and target, you know, if, if it in fact proves to be an effective messaging system, you know, increasing the education around that seems again, you know, really, really thoughtful and encouraging. So really looking forward to following the progress with the, the demographic analysis and the survey analysis. Just one question, when you, you've, you just, you showed a number of different campaigns that you've already been, you know, running. And you noted some of the metrics that you use to look for the impacts of those campaigns. You know, clicks on the, on the website, on, you know, on the page for rebates, et cetera. Are there, are there some, do you have sort of the go-to methods for evaluating whether an event was successful? Is there something you, you rely on to see how well things are working?
Yeah, that the slide I shared, those were actually just kind of pulling a few specific things. And actually, usually at the committee meeting, we do go through our quarterly analytics report because we had so many slides and we were just focused on water efficiency today. We pulled that out. I actually do have those available though to share to the board and happy to email them still. But yes, and it has kind of that more detail of click-throughs for certain campaigns, you know, how something did and not, you know, how many people opened the email? How many people actually went in a level further? How many people end up participating by connecting with Carrie's team? And so there's a number of different things that we're looking at and that we track on a quarterly basis. Again, today we were, took a little different approach with a number of slides, but yeah.
Yeah, if you could share those with the board, just as reminders, you know, regarding how much outreach activity is going on and then how you're monitoring the impacts.
Yeah, yeah. And certainly part of it, I said, you know, we were focused just today on an overview of water efficiency programs, but that actually captures every, everything. I mean, certainly the last few months have been very heavily focused on rates. And so there's a lot of communications around that. That's in our analytics report, water supply work. So yeah, we can share all that.
Great. And then quickly, I think one of our toilets is leaking. If I call the district, what, what will happen?
Before you leave, you should grab some leak detection tabs from the front office and there's instructions on the back. And if you still need help, give us a call.
No, but I, but after detecting, if, if I do detect the leak, will I get help in, in addressing the leak?
Right. So you, you can get direction if you're not sure how to go about fixing it. You could give us a call. You can walk you through that. Or there's resources online or at the front counter. There's actually on the back of the, the leak detection tablets, what you should do to, to take action. So fix the flapper, replace your flapper, adjust the fill valve, whatever it may be. There's, there, there are resources on our website and, and out in the lobby.
I'll, I'll call Ben.
Yeah, definitely. And he'll say, Carrie. Yeah, there you go. All right. Very good. Moving along, only about 10 more. Moving into the water efficiency master plan framework. So I wanted to start with some of the goals of the master plan, just to kind of reiterate what we hope to get out of this. We want to use not only Flume, but any of our, any and all data that's available to us to understand target marketing of our incentives and saturation and kind of where there are opportunities. So for example, we've heard today from Peter around outdoor irrigation at the, the tail end of the summer, right? Getting folks to turn their irrigation off sooner, those kinds of pieces. We're looking to develop some revised or new policies for the board's consideration. So of course, these would be brought back to the board for, for, you know, at a future, at a future time, but the plan will give us some options of what we could be looking at. If there are new technologies and programs, any research projects, anything else that, you know, we have, EKI has been hired as our, as our consultant for this project. Very knowledgeable in all things water efficiency. And so, you know, what do they know that we don't? And how can they help us? Look at also innovative programs, cost-effective programs that could be implemented. Ultimately, we want to develop some water use targets. So where do we want to be and what's a realistic goal? And part of that is then to understand the district's conservation savings potential. And so I included a slide here on how we would go about calculating the savings potential for the district. And we have kind of the bookend, starting with passive savings on the left, which would just be savings that would be achieved through natural placement and codes and standards. So if there was no incentives or regulation, no additional work being done on behalf of the district, there would be some savings that would just naturally occur. The other end would be the theoretical ceiling. So this would be, what would us calculating and considering? What would be the conservation savings potential if every single one of our customers was suddenly as efficient as possible? So when we think about indoor use, recognizing what we heard about Flume data and that the average is about 30 gallons per person per day, which, you know, it's average. So there are a number of customers that are less than 30 gallons per person per day. And how low could that possibly be? In this theoretical ceiling kind of scenario. When we think about outdoor would be looking at if all landscaping was primarily natives and had very little to no irrigation for residential customers, things like all of our non-functional turf would be removed. So these were kind of the bookend. So doing nothing would be passive and doing everything that could ever possibly be implemented would be the theoretical ceiling. And where we would look at landing would be somewhere likely in the middle. Thinking about our cost-effective savings potential for implementing programs in comparison to other water supplies, but then also looking at this technical maximum savings potential. So if we assumed that outdoor water use was remained at the same level that we saw during the drought and that saturation of the fixtures continued on this path that, that we've been seeing, you know, from, from the Flume data and, and levels of participation in our programs, getting at new development and making sure that or confirming that they would be online, coming online at this maximum efficiency. And so these would be calculated. So this is really a framework of the methodology of kind of saying like what, you know, if we look at everything on the table, what would those possibilities be? And then how can we filter them out and kind of put them in buckets to determine what makes sense for the district as we move forward? And so this was intended just to kind of, again, the framework of what we would be looking at for, for calculating this conservation savings potential. No numbers yet, but they'll be coming. When we look at the master plan's schedule, so we've got a contract in place, we have a contract in place with EKI. EKI is a leading consultant in water efficiency. They've done Valley Water, which is Santa Clara Valley Water District's Water Efficiency Master Plan. They've done the analysis for all the Sonoma Water and Saving Water Partnership Demand and Savings Analysis as part of our last Urban Water Management Plan. So they know our system and our region really well. And they've done work with Irvine Ranch and West Basin, a number of others around up and down the state. So we feel very confident that that we're going to bring high level of expertise to, to this process. We've heard a bit about the initial briefing and framework today. And then next step would be diving into the elements and the funding and kind of what is actually going into the plan. And we'll see that this come back this summer. So we're really still in the process and we've heard from some community members who are interested in engaging with us. And, and I look forward to having those conversations as we move forward. So I'll pause here and see if there's any questions on the master plan before we move on.
Just on the conservation saving on the analysis we've been doing there, will that then update the numbers that are in our
So that's a great question. Potentially, it wouldn't change the, the, the water conservation element necessarily, but it may help inform where there may be other opportunities. And so, you know, and that's really the intent of this entire master plan is that we have SUSA, which is a small piece of our incentives program, right? And we have everything else that we're doing as well. And so how does that all package together to, to build a really robust program? Recognizing that SUSA was an estimate of what we had a high level of confidence that we could achieve. But what else could we do as the master plan?
So could potentially expand upon the goals that are just within the strategic water supply.
I, I, I think so. I think the way we're thinking about the entire roadmap is adaptive management. And in context of water use efficiency, to the extent through the master plan or other efforts, we see a trajectory that's greater than what we estimated. Or conversely, less, we'd want to come back to the board and adaptively manage what our projections are. Or if we come up with something that's innovative that wasn't captured as part of that, that we think is a real opportunity, we'd want to consider, do we increase that target? Knowing increasing the target reduces a target for supplemental supply, which of course is the other side of the equation. We would talk with, with the board.
All right, moving along. So final section is going to be around matrix and funding. So we've heard a request to consider looking at water use by community or at the community level. And so we went through this process and no big surprise, Ross, Belvedere and Tiburon are the top three. They represent 7% of our residential connections, yet 12% of our overall water use. So when we, we reflect on what we heard from Peter around value of home and lot size impact, having a significant impact on water use is really no surprise that, that these would be the top three. And when we think about Adrian's comments about segmentation and how to motivate customers, this will be a, a segment that we'll want to consider of not necessarily how do we drive them to our programs? Cause it's likely they won't necessarily be interested in, in getting, you know, a rebate of in, in comparison to what their investment may be to make the change. But what would motivate them to make that change regardless of our incentive offerings, right? So what, what is, how do we remove those barriers and, and get them to engage in understanding their water use and continuing to reduce it? We also wanted to look at the FY24 budget and to try and bring some, some clarity. We've been talking about the water conservation element being 1.7 million and that it's a subset of our overall water efficiency budget, which is 2.6 as presented by Brett at prior meetings. So on the, the pie chart on the right is the, the solid blocks are the water conservation element funding piece. And the grid is everything beyond the water conservation element. And the, the polka dot purple is the portion of the water conservation element that's been extracted and provided to communications as a separate budget for them to do work around marketing and outreach. And so can take a look at this and let me know if you have questions down the road because it's, you'll see more detail from Brett coming, coming forward. But I wanted to, to make sure I included that. When we think about within our budget, the incentives line item is a specific line item that is, that can be extracted. And what we did here is we pulled incentive only funding from 2010 forward. And you can, and the blue is approved budget and the red is actual expenditures. So historically, we have always had a really robust budget, providing funding for our incentive programs has never been an issue. We, we're now working on the, outside of the water shortage emergency, of course, right? And now we're working on, okay, so how do we develop programs to actually expend the budget that's been adopted so that we can achieve those water savings we're projecting? Throughout today's presentation, we've talked about that it's not just incentives, right? It's all the other pieces as well that really will drive water use and, and water savings. And so what we have here is going back to 2013, so 10 years. The bar graph is actual expenditures and the line graph is the adopted budget, again, showing that we have historically had adequate funding for our program. And we recognize if we do see a high level of participation, it would be something we could always come back to the board and, and these updates would be an opportunity for us to, to, to notify you as, you know, how we're doing and if we are projecting to expend more than, than, than approved within the current budget. But I think the message here is I feel confident we have adequate funding in our current budget requests to, to meet the goals that we've, we've set. Short of doing your non-functional turf at $3 a square foot for over three years, right? That would be something, a shift, but we, we could bring that back. I did want to include a slide just on grant funding that's specific to water efficiency. We've been very successful in obtaining grants either specifically at the district or as a region. And then we get those benefits passed through to us. So our current grants and processes, as mentioned, the Flume Home Water Monitor Funding. We have one that's under development that's been mentioned at a prior board meeting. It's awarded to Sonoma Water from the Bureau Reclamation. And it's passed through funding. So the Bureau and Sonoma Water will do the negotiations and then eventually it'll come down to us, but that's kind of in the works. We also received about $2 million for AMI pilots. There were three phases that were completed over the last five years. And so it's really encouraging to see. And that's how we can kind of have a better understanding of what AMI would look like in our service areas based on those pilots. We have two pending grant applications listed there. If awarded, we'll be, bring them back to the board for, you know, with all the details and, and for the considerations. So in summary, comprehensive review of all things water efficiency, current programs and initiatives. Of course, we want to continue to use data to the best of our ability and, and to inform our program designs. We have our ongoing committee meetings each quarter when we can provide updates. And then any of the program changes will formally be brought for the board's consideration at a, at a future time. Got any other questions?
Questions? No, I just want to, when I A3 slides, it's not easy to put together. So thank you very much both for putting together this presentation. I thought it was a very applicable way to do it at a committee meeting. It was very informative. So thank you very much on that. And also for all the work that's going into this program too. So thank you.
Yeah, likewise, I think you've been hearing the board interest in this topic and to have the full presentation is really helpful. Carrie, I hope you will move, you know, to bring items to the board for approval around the updating of ordinances so that we can ensure that we're on top of that, not missing any opportunities to improve the effectiveness of, of those programs. Again, I'll just repeat, I was struck by the data on outdoor water use versus actual requirements. And it reminds me that we often hold, you know, very water restricted countries like Israel up as examples of good water management. We tend to focus a lot on their supply development, their abilities to recycle water. What we don't maybe emphasize as much is how careful they are with irrigation, you know, and they're, they're probably have invested as much, if not more, in improving the effectiveness of their irrigation. We know that so many of our customers have old landscaping that's been developed over generations and to asking, to ask people to completely replace that wholesale is, 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 you know, that's, that's, that's a challenge. And so if, if there are ways to work with them to improve the efficiency of their, of their irrigation, that would, that, that would be pretty, I think, innovative as well. I, I don't, I don't know if there are technologies again that, that would allow us to, to, to do that. So maybe something to look at. I, I, I also heard, I, I mentioned this to Ben, that East Bay Mud is collaborating with EC Berkeley to on a study to understand the impacts of AMI on customer behavior, on household behavior. I think it's sometimes difficult, as Adrian mentioned, demographics can be very, you know, complex. And so extrapolating from one setting to another, even doing that within our service area can be tricky. So doing it from an, even another region of the Bay Area may not be entirely, you know, valid, but maybe something we can learn about or I, or it could help us identify questions that we want to ask as we're seeking to, you know, ensure the effectiveness of our own AMI installation.
On that, just, I do have a call today with Clifford to follow up on that. Both how do we plug in, understanding the study and how would we plug into the study, but also the broader partnership plugging into that? I'll let you know how that goes.
Great. Thank you. And then I think maybe the last, one last question, Carrie is how do we compare as a district with respect to our investments in demand management? You know, particularly against suppliers in, in more water stressed areas.
I wonder if Peter's still on. Is Peter still on? All right. Peter has presented on this topic to us in the past, showing it was mid drought. So it was a difficult comparison, right? So of course our expenditures were significantly higher. But showing that we, we are certainly a leader in our investments in, in water efficiency and conservation. And, and he stated that that's likely why we have the level of efficiency for residential use that we do have. And then we're kind of middle of the road when we look at per capita water use, not just residential, but district wide. And we're kind of middle of the road in that at about, you know, just under 120 or so pre-drought and about 100 now, which is, if we can maintain that, it's quite impressive. And so I do have some data on that. I could be happy to share that with the board as well.
Great. So the comparisons indicate that we are leading in terms of the amount. I hope we can maintain that position. But you're also suggesting, Carrie, that I hope we can maintain that position, but you're also suggesting, Kerry, that some of the that we we have room for improvement if we're, you know, in terms of demand levels, if we're somewhere in the middle. So and that that may depend a lot on the types of housing, I would guess. So.
And it's all it's all customers, right? So residential is just a residential customer. So it's really taken into consideration, businesses, institutional, all of our other users, which, you know, can have a significant impact on our overall usage, right? So think of San Quentin, think of our, you know, other types of users that that we would need to engage with to to really get them to continue to root and drive that overall GPCD down.
Good. Then maybe my last comment is just to reiterate that, you know, we pay so much attention to this topic, both because water is a pressure precious precious resource, because we want to be able to manage our investments in infrastructure and additional supply development going forward. And I think maybe what's becoming most increasingly important is ensuring that we're we we are a sustainable water supplier and and that we are sustainable communities. The public can appreciate how important all of these aspects are when we talk about demand management. Would that maybe turn it over for public comments?
Yes, we have three so far. Mr. Phil Sauter, Ed Jamison, and then Wendy Callens. You have three minutes or up to three minutes.
Okay, thank you for a great presentation. I support staff's goal of 4 million gallons daily savings, but 2045 is a generation away. I calculated that getting from where we are today to 4 million gallons per day savings by 2045 would average 2 million gallons a day savings for 22 years or a cumulative savings of 16 billion gallons, which is 49,000 acre feet. At the current conservation budget of 3 million a year, we'd spend $66 million by 2045. So staff's current conservation plan, I think, costs about 1350 per acre foot. That's a third of some other water supply options. With triple the investment, could we hit 4 million gallons per day by 2027 while we're all still here to celebrate? The Flume study was really enlightening and it showed to me real clearly that outdoor use is the key to conservation, not indoor use. If you look at slide 76, we're starting to see where outdoor use is the greatest, but I think we can get even more localized. I'd like to see what our top 1,000 customers are using in outdoor water and how clustered they are. And I think Paul might say we only have to look at the top 500 customers. Purple pipes may may not be feasible in Marin as they are in so many other water districts, but we'll never know until we do the analysis and I'll be glad to help with that. Finally, I'd like to see some numbers on the efficacy of our current conservation programs. If we can't put a meaningful number on actual savings, we may want to drop some less effective programs and focus on the relatively few that will get us to 4 million gallons a day the quickest. I'm happy to support staff's goal of 4 million gallons from conservation. And I think our time and any consultant's time should be focused on how quickly we can get there. The next drought would get us there right away, but I think it would be nice if we could manage ourselves and our customers to that goal. I I thought during the presentation of maybe a motto for ourselves, which would be and for our customers would be preparing for the next drought. And finally, for I I'm surprised that we have the negative reaction that that's been talked about about using recycled water. I recently went to the Tunnel Tops Park in San Francisco. Here's a picture of it. It's beautiful landscaping. And I think if we could communicate to our Marin customers that they could create something like this with a with recycled water, I think that would be a strong communication message to put forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ed Jamison, please.
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
This was another really outstanding presentation by Peter Mayer, complimented by Kerry's excellent comments, particularly her recommendations to sunset some programs. From January 8th to the beginning of August last year, the district gave 14 presentations to the board showing just how cost ineffective some of the district's conservation programs are. And there were two guest star appearances by Mr. Mayor, who declared that MMWD effectively has no further opportunities for indoor usage reductions and that we are near rock bottom in our outdoor usage as well. Or as he said on May 10th, and I quote, "Outdoor water savings are entirely dependent on where you start from. And you guys are starting from an extremely low level of outdoor water use." He went on to pose the question of, "What do you want for your quality of life?" End quote. MMWD staff need to present to the new board a recap of what we learned last year about the financial wastefulness of some of the district's conservation programs. The gray water, laundry to landscape and rain barrel programs are particularly hard to justify. Director Larry Russell looked into installing a cistern for rainwater capture and said it would have cost him $100,000. The gray water code has been ineffective and overly costly to complying customers. But more importantly, it is an example of Orwellian big brother overreach. The gray water ordinance needs to be rescinded. The board should have a presentation on East Bay Mud's AMI experience to learn from their recent experience. As for Director Kush's question about our spending compared to other districts, Mr. Mayor's presentation on September 21st of 2021 showed us amazingly outspending truly arid districts on a per capita basis for conservation measures. Finally, the district's conservation programs need to be anchored in cost effectiveness. They must not continue to be a blind commitment to conservation at any cost. Thank you.
Thank you. Wendy Callens and then Larry Minnikes, please. Go ahead, Ms. Callens.
Yes, thank you. Wendy Callens with Sustainable Marin. I really want to commend staff on a thorough and very informative report. I really think that we have a lot of tools in our toolbox. I don't think we should be throwing out the bath with the rainwater. But I do think that I agree with Phil Sauter and a number of others of us in the environmental community that let's look at what it would take to reach these conservation goals at an earlier date. I would like to see staff built into their master plan, not just a set date of 2045, but a a series of dates. And it could be three different dates. Could these this be reached earlier? And what would it take with investments in order to do that? As a member of the environmental community, our organization and other organizations are well are willing to work with you to come up with the kind of strategies and outreach that can achieve those goals using the the solid data that you have. Resilient Neighborhoods is but one of the many projects that Sustainable Marin sponsors that has the ability to reach a broad base of your customer base. And we really want to be your partners, not your adversaries here. So I look forward to working with staff. And again, please ask, what I want from the board is to ask for those various dates so that we can look at how we can achieve these goals at a much more rapid rate, because climate change is not going to wait for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Callens. And then Mr. Larry Minnikes, please.
Yes, good morning, and I'd like to second the others that said have suggested what a great presentation this was. It's a lot of information, lot to unpack. One of one of the things that has come up is that we are actually doing a really, really good job at conserving, generally speaking. What we have a program right now that can send people out to help people do a better job in their homes. And what the board might consider for the future is something similar to what the MWPA has implemented, which is an inspector program. And in the first year of the inspector program, there people were giving advisories as to what they needed to do around their homes. But in this year, they're they will start to be more regulatory and actually issue fines for work that's not going to be done. And the board may want to consider some sort of code and regulations going forward, where you actually have a an auditor, something along those lines that goes out to the homes, the the 5 to 10% of homes that are using the most water as perhaps the most efficient way to continue to reduce water consumption. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. There are no further speakers.
Any other board comments or questions? No, with that, we will adjourn our meeting at 11:30.
Thank you.